Our city council meeting tonight, May 6th. Our start time is 7:02. I would like to acknowledge everyone in the audience. It's the first time we've had kind of a full audience. That's great. It's customary that we go ahead and start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then after that, we have a prayer. And we kind of switch it up each month. This month, it's my month. So I've asked your Holiness Reverend Neil Humphreys to give us our prayer. So after the pledge, then if you could, if you could come up and say the prayer, we'd appreciate it. So for now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'm dressed like this because the mayor ordered it. She spotted me at the War Dog Memorial a month ago or so, participating in that dedication ceremony. My name is Neil Humphrey. I've lived in Leighton since 1999. I'm not a native Utahn, although my great-grandmother, who was part of a plural marriage, was from South Weaver, Davis County. And my great-great-grandfather, the Danite Anson Call, was the first state president in this county. So I have, and I'm proud of all those roots, plus many others. Let us pray. Holy and eternal God, whom we call Father, we thank you for all who are gathered here this evening and for how you bless us, for life itself, for that measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. On this occasion, we thank you for the privilege to be involved in useful work and the honor of being entrusted with bearing responsibilities for all who live and work in our city. Your holy scriptures instruct us that citizens are to obey those who govern, for you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. Help them to remember that effective leadership requires a humble sense of servitude. By your grace, grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, sensitivity to the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their labors. Grant them and us wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right, good, and true. May they and we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city, we pray, in your holy name. And God's children said, amen.
What a beautiful prayer, and thank you very much. Really appreciate that. Okay, council, we have a set of minutes, several sets of minutes, that we need to approve. So is there any corrections to any of those minutes? If not, I'll look for a motion regarding the minutes, and I'll let whoever wants to make the motion to state each one of them.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the following minutes. The minutes of the Leighton City Council Strategic Planning Meeting on January 13th, 2021, the minutes of the Leighton City Council Work Meeting, February 18th, 2021, and the minutes of the Leighton City Council Work Meeting of April 1st, 2021, is written.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? Thank you. We'll now move on to our municipal announcements. Council, do any of you have any municipal announcements we need to be aware of? Okay, seeing that you have none, I actually have two announcements that I want to make in regards to Highway 89. Most of you are aware of the continued construction there, but for the right reason. And coming up on May 8th, Highway 89 will be reduced to one way, or one lane in both directions. So that would be Friday, I guess, May 8th from 9:00 PM, which is Friday night, and will continue until 5:00 AM on Saturday. Excuse me. I got those backwards. But anyway, so yeah, from 9:00 PM on May 8th till 5:00 AM, May 9th. And then also with Adams Canyon, any of you access an Adams Canyon? Just be aware that there's a lot of, I guess, storm sewer and storm drains going in up there, in fact, as well as it on 89, all the way along 89. But anywhere, the point that I'm going to get at is they're going to have the parking on one side of the road. So you may go up one day and you're on one side, the next two days later, you might go up and it might be on another side. So depending on what they have going on, just know that you're gonna, that parking's gonna shuffle back and forth. And as far as that lane reduction, actually, it's from Cherry Lane through Oak Hill Drive, just so you're aware of it.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just a question, do you have any idea how much more excavating they have to do for the semis that are traversing Gentile? How much longer that's gonna last? Do you have any idea?
I do not. I know that, I know that they've been hauling a lot of field back and forth, so I don't know, Steve.
Just curious.
And they're traveling Leighton Parkway as well.
Yeah. I don't think we know right now. But, you know, it's continuing, and like I said, it's for improvements in the long run, but.
It's gotta be done.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and move on to our verbal presentations tonight. And tonight's kind of a fun night. Myself and Councilmember Thomas was able to judge a student contest at Leighton Elementary. This is a contest that typically takes place at all the schools, but this year, you know, with COVID, it was reduced a little bit. And I'd just like to acknowledge the students of Leighton Elementary. And I know we have our principal, Melissa Pendigress.
She's out there.
See? Yeah. Would you mind coming up and kind of explaining the program? I thought it was a good, yeah, go ahead. Just kind of explain what these kids do. I mean, I gotta tell you, in an elementary level and knowing what you put these kids through, I was extremely impressed, not only with the program, but with the kids.
The kids are impressive, for sure.
They are very impressive.
Thank you. Thanks for having us, council members and mayor. At Leighton Elementary, we believe in not only the academics of our kids and having high expectations for that, but we also believe in creating a well-rounded student who is respectful and polite and an upstander, not a bystander, and shows mindfulness. And so four years ago, we got to, a few of us got to go to Atlanta, Georgia, to an academy called Ron Clark Academy, where they hold a national Amazing Shake competition. And we brought back lots of ideas from that school and have implemented them, including the best house, River, which you are wearing, a River. Listen to me. Oh, almost done.
Almost done.
Excuse me. Oh, I know which house I'm in. A house system at our school, but the Amazing Shake was at a competition where our kids compete through a series of events. And we narrow it down to the cream of the crop. And this year, after, with COVID, we weren't sure we were gonna do it, so we did it later in the year. They did two online rounds, which this past year has shown us that online skills are as important as in-person skills. And then we had, we were lucky enough to be able to do three different in-person blitzes, if you will, so quick things, with the people from Maverick, the people from Fidelity Investments, who were, they're not back in their office, so they were remote. And then the Mayor and City Councilman Day was there as well. And these kids went through the wringer. It was tough, but we have three beautiful, awesome students who rose to the top. May I present them?
I would love you to present them, and we have a nice little token here, and maybe afterwards, they can.
Stella Pond was our first-place winner, followed by Alyssa Mangelson and Emily Schmidt.
Those kids, come on up. We'd love to kind of meet you. So if you wouldn't mind, maybe you could come around and you can do an elbow bump here with the council, and then when you're done, maybe stand right here and we can take a quick picture for you.
Congratulations.
Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations, good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. So if you kids want to come right up here by the dices? I actually have, if you guys want to stand up for them. We have a nice little token. Go away. Okay, we can have them. Come on, you gotta be in there.
All the smile, Dave.
Maybe legally, they should take their masks off, and so should the council for one shot without the masks on.
You don't have to tell me twice.
We will do that, and then don't leave, because I got something for you.
Yeah. Take your mask off for this one. You can hold your breath or whatever.
I love your faces, teeth. We love you, Ed.
Okay. And kids, I also have, I want to be able to present these kids with a really cool medallion that was made by the Davis Tech College. The neat thing about these medallions is they were made by students that were legally blind, and they have the year 2021 on them. So we want to give each one of you one of those medallions and say congratulations. And here's one for the, so here's one for the school. Hey, thank you.
There is five, fifth, and sixth.
Two fifth, right?
Yeah, we had two fourth, we had a couple of fourth graders compete as well. Yep, they're, they're the best. This is awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you again, and thanks for joining us tonight. So as you can see, there's part of our future leaders. Okay, let's go ahead and move on with our agenda items. Right now, we are down to our citizens' comments. And this is a period where, you know, we'd like to hear from our citizens of any type of suggestions or accolades, but I'd like to open it up now. I have to say that since I got burned one time. But certainly, you're welcome to come up to either side of the mic. Make sure you state your name for our recorder, and if you're at all underage, then you're welcome to just write that on a piece of paper for. But we do like to keep here, if there's gauging by the group here, that if you have a representative on behalf of all of you, or a large group, then certainly we'll give you a little bit more time. Otherwise, we'd ask that you kind of be brief and to the point. But the floor's now yours.
All right. Good. I'm not gonna be able to talk with this.
Good evening, council and mayor. Good to see you again, Joy. I am Shannon Anderson, a longtime resident of Leighton City. And you probably recognize my name because I sent you guys a presentation that Q Elsie is passing out here in regards to some concerns that we have related to 2200 West in Leighton and approximately 650 North, which I did put in there kind of where that's located and pictures. It's directly across from the entrance into Ellison Park. And this seems to be a longtime concern, but it was brought, it hit really close to home on April 7th at about 4:20 in the afternoon. No parent wants to get a call saying their child has been in a car accident. Our son was driving home from work. He works in Kaysville, so often takes 2200 West. He was stopped to turn into 650 North and was hit from behind. The lady that hit him did not even stop. She did not even see him and was going about 45 miles an hour. The second picture that I shared was six days later, which was another teenage resident of our city in the exact same spot. Both of these vehicles were totaled. Thank goodness that both of these vehicles were safe vehicles, and these kids are okay. Both were hit by distracted driving and going way too fast. Just some, you know, commentary, 2200 West is the main connection road between Gentile and Gordon. And I think you mentioned at the beginning about the semis. Well, I don't know how many of you tried to go down 2200 at about 5:00 in the evening. And today, it was, the line to go through was all the way back from the light on Hillfield to Gentile. So the traffic is getting worse and worse, and as that park, as legacy continues to get built and added on to, more and more traffic is going to be diverted down that As we got prepared for this, I, you know, kind of drove around the city, helped me understand why the speed limit on Leighton Parkway is less than it is on 2200. There are no residents whose driveways are right on Leighton Parkway, but there are on 2200 West. My husband is a late Davis County school bus driver. He has actually presented to the council multiple times about the traffic issues that we have in our city. He has a bus stop right on 2200. And just today, in dropping off his high school students, two vehicles passed his reds. Saturdays create additional challenges with use of the park. If you look at the pictures, this happened to be last night on the third slide that Lindsay took for us, she walked down there. We have turned 2200 into a parking lot for activities that go on at Ellison Park. We cannot see pulling out of our neighborhood. Park, the cars park all the way up onto 650 North, right in the view of being able to turn onto 2200 on both sides. We should not be allowing that to be used as a parking lot for Ellison Park. My other big concern, and I went over and talked to the park, which is the development that's going in in the old Swan Lakes, and got to count for the number of residents, multiply that by about 1.75 vehicles. As soon as that area is completed, there will be approximately 400-plus more vehicles traveling on a daily basis in and out of 2200 West. I'm now going to turn it over to Elsie. This is not an Elsie and Shannon concern. She's going to share what she has done and give her perspective from, I think it'll be great to hear from some of our youth.
That's cute.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Elsie Thacker. I live west of Ellison Park. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us today. I feel very passionate about this. Something needs to be done about this traffic concern we are discussing. Many other residents in West Leighton are also concerned. I put together a survey to get an idea of how many people are concerned about this. In the survey, please look at the notes we gave to you to see more details. Please see questions three and four of the survey. We got 66 responses, and one of the questions we asked was, do you feel you are safe to walk or bike across 2200 West? 92.5% said no. And then another question was, would you feel safer if there was a crosswalk? 97.5% said yes. We also asked for feedback about, feedback from residents on their concerns about this area that are listed on the paper for you all. So one of the residents stated, it is becoming a very busy intersection that is too busy and too dangerous for kids to cross. There is no sidewalk on the west side of 2200 West for kids to go to a stoplight even if they wanted to. Now, with the new housing development going in on the southeast corner of 2200 West and Gordon, there definitely should have been a traffic plan for the intersection of 650 North and 2200 West. A stoplight would be ideal for a crosswalk, the cross, at the very least. I'm aware of a similar situation near Barnes Park in Kaysville. They had gone to the city and asked for something to be done. Unfortunately, a little girl was hit and killed on this road. It wasn't until after she was killed that the city did something. I am asking you to consider this before this happens to one of us. I encourage you to reread through the comments that are in the presentation. Thank you for seriously considering this matter and for your time. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions? I gotta hand it to you, this is extremely well thought out of, and you've done an excellent job on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a question. Elsie, help me out with 650. Is that go right into the park?
Yes, it does.
So you go into Swan Lakes if you turn left? Well, depends which way you're going.
Yeah, so, well, 2200, so Gordon, Gentile. 650 is about right in the middle. It's the entrance right into Ellison Park.
Yeah, it's on the west side.
Correct.
So you're talking right there.
Correct. Yeah, and we've got about five or six residents that have driveways to pull out, and I'm not sure who was able to come tonight, but one of the residents shared with me through a Facebook message that she's the second owner of the house. It's the older home that's been redone. The first owners of the house actually had an accident happen, and a truck and a trailer ended up in their front yard.
Well, I do know that there was, there is a plan in place for street improvements in this area, not only for widening, but for striping as well as a sidewalk. But you guys have raised a lot of other concerns here that I think we need to probably turn this over to our staff and have them kind of investigate this for us and see what, you know, what would be warranted and allow us to kind of go through that process, if you don't mind.
We appreciate the consideration.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
So do you go to Ellison Park Elementary?
Um, no, I go to Sand Springs, but a lot of kids in my neighborhood do go to Ellison Park.
What is the path that they take? What is the path that they should take?
So if the parents don't drive them to work or to school, which is most of what they do because of the concern about, they have to go out onto Gordon and walk down, and with the construction going on at the park, it is very unsafe for those children right now to be walking on that sidewalk. There's a lot of heavy equipment going in and out of that on a daily basis, so most parents have opted to drive their children to school.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank, Zach, do you have a question? Okay. All right, well, thank you. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention. You're welcome to come up, just state your name and your address for the recorder and...
West Escalante, 2611 West, 650 North. So I was looking that up as well. From my house, as the bird flies, we're about .9 miles from the school. State code says that school districts need to provide a bus if it's 1.5. And I figure since they're not supposed to cross the street there per city, they tell them to go up to Hillfield. It actually comes out to 1.42 from my house. From another house down the road, it is 1.51 in the school district, whether you go to Gordon or Hillfield. And so as a city school district, as our situation, we're failing those houses by making them go over either to Gordon or Hillfield for these kids. So if we're not willing to give them a school bus stop, then we should be giving them a crosswalk. And I believe state code says that at an intersection, even if the crosswalk isn't marked, because it is a four-way intersection, a crosswalk should legally exist.
Are you talking at 650, or are you talking about existing?
I'm talking 650 and 22 at that intersection where it goes into the, into the park. So there should be an intersection there. And then I also believe, because it's a two-lane road, we should actually push the speed limit down to 35 miles an hour.
Yeah.
And so we should reduce it. We should also put a school, a crosswalk in, whether it be the orange flags or the flashing thing over by, on Hillfield. I like that one as well.
I know, I do know, yeah, I do too. And I've used it, believe me.
Yeah, it works great.
Along with the flags. I'm not sure, I do know that there is a state statute as far as legally, how far in advance, because whenever there's a crosswalk, you got to be able to acknowledge that traffic or give them fair warning that you're approaching a crossing. And from my understanding is, I don't think there's enough distance for that according to the state statute. But that doesn't mean that we can't probably look at improving the crossings at both Gordon and Gentile for you. And as far as the school district, with the, I guess, with your busing or providing the crossing guards, you need to contact them as well, and then we work with them.
Gotcha. And they said they can't, they can't put anything there until there's an actual crosswalk there. And they do, they said that they would have to lower the speed limit, and so that's where it comes back to you guys to get this rolling.
And that's where I kind of, that's why I'm saying we really need to rely on our staff and have them do some studies and that. Looks like our city manager wants to chime in here.
Well, just to inform just a little bit, it's a very legitimate question. The city is aware of this area, and with the growth that's happening, it is changing. There's no doubt about that. And what used to be a fairly quiet country road is not so much anymore, and it's going to continue to develop. The north end's being developed now intensively, as you talked about, and eventually the south end will as well. It's just that so many people want to move here. The one thing I think is important to understand, which most people don't, because it's not your business, you know, and you don't think about these things, you're raising families, and that's the job of the city to look at, is that all of these traffic control devices are driven by specific metrics, both by state law and by engineering practices. And so the safety issues that are put in or not put in are driven by that. They're not driven by emotion, they're not driven by convenience, they're all about creating the safest environment. So there's a process called a warrant study. So whenever we, the city puts a street light in, a stoplight, a stop sign in, a crosswalk in, there's a pedestrian crosswalk that has a specific definition, there's a school crossing that has a specific definition, and they're two completely different things. And the requirements associated with each of those is completely different. And the city, the city has to follow those codes because they're state law in some cases or just best engineering practices. And if the city doesn't, if we put things in because of convenience or because of emotion or what have you, all very legitimate reasons from people who live in an area, then the city puts itself, thus the taxpayers, at risk legally to be sued if someone were to be injured. So in this area, as the mayor, the studies that we've done in the past, it does not meet the criteria for a school crossing at this point in time. As the mayor indicated, it does in terms of volume, based on a recent survey we did, in terms of the number of people that are crossing. The challenge with that is where you're crossing is not according to your, the school route plan. It's was a cooperative effort between the school safety committee and the school and the parents and the city to identify that. And that was to, as Mrs. Anderson, is that what your name? Mrs. Anderson indicated was to push the students north up through the subdivision where there is walk to Gordon and then go east on Gordon to the school. That was the approved plan because of the inconvenience and concerns about safety, which we understand, many have chose to just cross at 650 North on 2200 West. So that's a scary thing to do. the, the school safety committee and the school and the parents and the city to identify that. And that was to, as Mrs. Anderson, is that what your name? Mrs. Anderson indicated was to push the students north up through the subdivision where there is walk to Gordon and then go east on Gordon to the school. That was the approved plan because of the inconvenience and concerns about safety, which we understand, many have chose to just cross at six-fifty um north on twenty-two-hundred west. So that, that's a scary thing to do. It's inappropriate thing to do from a safety perspective. Uh, I don't say that from a judgmental perspective. So we have looked at, at the viability of putting a, a school crossing there. As the mayor indicated, the challenge is, is that in order, when you have a school, a legitimate school crossing, you have to have um a number of warnings that will tell drivers that you're approaching and then entering into a school crossing area. So you've got to have reduced speed limit signs. You've got to have other kind of warning signs that give the driver plenty of time to do that. And those have in state statutes, specific criteria is that when those notices start have to be given. The challenge here is, is that distance between Hillfield on the south and, and Gordon on the north do not allow for those laws to be met in terms of the notification. So that's one of the challenges we're going to have to try to work through there. So it leaves you with a pedestrian crossing. Typically, best practice is to avoid mid-block crossings, pedestrians. If you, if you put crossings where, pedestrian crossings where people don't anticipate seeing them. Most people assume that it's in an intersection at Gordon or at Hillfield Road on the south. It's a controlled intersection, it's a lighted intersection. The cars stop, uh, at least have every direction to stop. We recognize some people don't, or they do a rolling stop. But at least there's a measure of ex- expectancy. So the city historically has been very careful about where we place other types of pedestrian crossings to not exacerbate a problem. The other thing we need to worry about here, which we have these issues all across the city, is an adult, us, uh, we should be able to understand, look both ways and understand when we should crosswalk, we need to look before we cross. Sometimes young people um don't process that in the same way. And because there's a crossing, even though it's an unmanned, unguarded pedestrian crossing, they believe that it's safe to step out into that crosswalk without waiting for, to see what the driver behavior is. Which actually, in some cases, I'm not saying it's the case here, but actually makes it much more unsafe because it creates a false sense of security that I'm going to walk in a crosswalk and everybody can stop. Even in the city, uh, in Kaysville, which I'm familiar with as an example, where we have the large hot crossings, uh, which are, you push the button and it lights flash, you know, like Las Vegas neon, um, people run those all the time. And it has nothing to do with the structure of the sub, of the, of the intersection. It's because we just don't pay attention uh what we're, to what we're doing. So those are all, I'm not trying to say anything negative. I'm just giving you the background for how the city has to look at these things and how we historically have looked at these things to ensure that we're not exacerbating a problem. But we're going to continue to look at it. Uh, the, the, the park had to do a traffic study required by the council. That was an estimate based on what was going to happen. We're continuing to uh evaluate that. And as it gets more fully developed and we start getting actually people coming in and out, we can see the movements, they're going south, they're going north, what have you. We'll continue to evaluate that and try to address the issue. And at some point, it may make sense for a pedestrian crossing. We just want to make sure it gets put in the right place and the money that we're spending on behalf of all of you, the taxpayers is, is, uh, is being spent wisely. So it's a very legitimate issue. We've talked about it internally ourselves before, recognizing that area is, is changing. But it's, I guess what I'm trying to convey, it's, it's a, it's a much more complex issue than it may appear to be for a resident. And I fully understand that, you know, if parents are concerned and see what's happening and these accidents and it's, it's uh can be unsettling.
And I completely understand that and I completely understand. People will run the red lights, they'll run stop signs, they'll go to, to cars around a bus, absolutely. We can't control that. However, we can minimize the risk. And as you said, Layton City has risk now. Whether you leave a crosswalk there or you don't. Right now, I'd say at least on every weekend, couple hundred people cross anywhere along that line because no one's going to walk three or point-three miles down to the stoplight to walk right back. And so we already have the risk. And I just want to make sure you guys understand, whether you put one in or not, eventually something's going to happen there.
And we do understand the risk. The distance is about, is, is uh a little over twelve-hundred feet. As I recall, to walk down to, to Gordon, excuse me, to Hillfield Road to cross and then come back up, it's approximately a five-minute walk. We understand that's, that's a long time for little legs uh and maybe even for adult legs from time to time. So again, we're not aware of it, we're not dismissive of it. I think that the issue with regard to, that you've raised legitimately with regard to the speed limit is something uh we, we definitely need to look at because that area is changing. The issue with the parking, we're well aware of that. And it's, it's maddening because the city actually does have parking on the eastern side of the park, but it's generally has multitudes of parking space. But all of us are selfish, if I can, some way to frame it. And, and we're willing to park in your neighborhood in, in front of your driveway because it, it only takes me fifty steps to get to the, the ball field. Then if I park over where there's actually designated parking. But the city's actually working under the council's direction to establish more parking, uh, more surface parking. It's going to be in the center and eastern part of that, of that park because that's the place to do it. So, uh, but we'll continue to look at that. We'll look at the red striping and, and maybe, again, I say it nicely, but get a do, a good dose of enforcement um and a few uh tickets. We had that same issue for several years along the south side of Hillfield Road. People were parking on the south side of Hillfield and then walking across Hillfield, which is ludicrous because of the speeds and volumes of traffic there. And we, we just began a very aggressive uh effort after a lot of warnings of just writing citations. And that's pretty cleaned up, but they've just moved to other locations. And so we're aware of that and recognize that that's part of the, the cat and mouse. I'm not trying to be flippant or too blunt about it, but that's the reality. And so we can easily, all those kinds of things we can easily uh do. And uh what you've described should not be happening uh in your subdivision. So I don't, maybe that's too much information, uh mayor, but I wanted to just help these folks understand. We're, we're sympathetic to it and aware of it and are continuing to look at it. We just need to do it in the right way and in, in the right time, um, and not exacerbate an issue, but.
Well, thank you. And I, I just want to, you know, let you folks know that we'll ta- we'll definitely take this serious and, and follow back up with the staff and see what we can do here.
Can I say to Elsie, thank you. It's hard as an adult to get up and talk and do what you just did. So bravo to you for having the nerve to do it. Thank you.
And I know, how old are you, Elsie? Well, I was going to say you could one, run for one of these seats in just a few, few months. You might not be old enough, but we'd love to have you, so.
Have mine. Yeah, that's, nobody, you know.
Okay, go ahead and state your name and purpose.
Um, my name is Diana Mangleson. I just wanted to talk about our neighborhood and some traffic issues there. Um, this, I, I'm new to this, so I don't know exactly if I'm going to overstep in what I'm saying, but I'll do my best. We live in the neighborhood just south of the new Layton Hospital. So we are west or east, I'm sorry, of Flint Street and south of Layton Hospital. We're in that neighborhood. Um, when Layton Hospital was put in, I know that there was consideration of making two-hundred East go through to Layton Parkway and that was pushed down by someone. I don't know, I want to smack them though, maybe a little bit. But we only have one way to get in and out of our entire neighborhood and that is onto Flint. And Flint is insane. It is, it gets so busy and so backed up. It'll be stopped from Layton Parkway, clear back past nine-hundred south. It's stopped on rush hour. And I, my, I guess idea, and I don't know if it's possible, is putting a turn lane on, on Flint. I have almost been rear-ended multiple times trying to turn into my neighborhood. There is a turn lane if you go further east and north and there's a turn lane if you go further south. But for some reason, in that middle area, there's no turn lane there. And if you look at the width of the road, it, from my own just observances, it appears to be the same width steadily throughout. So I don't understand why there isn't a turn lane there. Um, and also, I know in the past, they've looked at possibly putting a side, uh, a crosswalk there. But they said that on the study, there wasn't enough foot traffic. And I just really wonder what time they did that study. At night, especially when there's church activities, there's a ton of youth that are crossing that road and it can get really dangerous and really scary. I used to not mind my kids crossing that road and probably within the last year or so, it scares me. It scares me to have my teenager cross that road. It is extremely busy. Um, luckily, the speed limit on that road is not as fast as, as these people. So we don't have that issue as much as the traffic. Although nobody follows the speed limit. But that's another story for another day. But um, that's just something I'd, I'd love for them to look into, to see if we can make that safer for the community that lives in that area. I know when they had a, for a while, they put up a fake light there because it was only one lane through part of it. Oh my goodness, never do that again, get a flagman. It took an hour to get a third of a mile. Tell them, no, just the flagman. The flagman was amazing, the fake light was terrible. It doesn't understand. But um, it's, it's a scary place. It's, I've waited fifteen minutes to turn left out of my neighborhood before on multiple, multiple occasions, especially during rush hour. So that's all I have.
So are you talking about the, the yellow lines that are down the center as the turn lane?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
So the history behind that is, is when the hospital was built, that was pushed because the residents across the street needed to be able to get out of their driveways for kind of the same. So that's why that was put in that section by the highway was for those residents to be able to um exit their driveways and have a place to, to go out in.
Well, I'd love to get out of my neighborhood. There's hundreds of us in there.
Yeah.
And so a turn lane would be, and also just when I'm turning into my neighborhood, like I said, I've almost been rear-ended multiple times because I have nowhere to go. And so, and a lot of the times, you'll have four or five people lined up to turn into our neighborhood and it really slows down traffic. And that, that road's already struggling. So anything that can help prevent traffic impeding would be, would be helpful. But it does make me nervous putting in that turn lane if there's not a crosswalk. Um, the closest crosswalk from, from the south is clear at two-hundred. That's about a half mile away. And the closest crosswalk from the north is um past the hospital. And there, they would have to pass that busy hospital and go clear up there. That's about a third of a mile away. So there isn't, I don't need, I don't think a school crosswalk is necessary there, but just a crosswalk would be nice with some flags for the kids to try to get attention of some of those cars to stop them, so.
Okay, anyway, well, thank you. I, I, I think what we're all hearing here is the effects of how our city is changing and the growth that's going on. I happen to live in that same area. I know exactly what you're talking about. I'm on Gentile. It's a struggle to get in and out of my driveway as well, depending on the time of day. Um, I do know that there are crosswalks right there at the intersection of Flint and um the Parkway.
Yeah, that's about a third of a mile from nine-hundred.
But just like everyone else. I mean, you know, we all want the, the shortest distance to the point of destination where we're going. But again, I think, I think we're going to have to kind of really analyze a lot of this throughout our city. But uh, yeah, it's, it's a struggle. But I guess uh the case in point here is um, especially for you during rush hour traffic, that I think once we get this West Davis corridor in, that hopefully that's going to eliminate a lot of this traffic that's on our artillery streets. I mean, you're faced with it on Gen- on Flint, I'm faced with it on Gentile, these folks are faced with it on twenty-two-hundred. And you know, this is just the west side really booming right now. So, um, but certainly we'll, we'll, we'll take all this in and, and see what we can do.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the, the work, which we appreciate, the, the state work on Highway eighty-nine, which is obviously one of the major north-south transportation routes, and then on I-15, which is the other, only other north-sou- north, north-south route. There's literally, if you drive during, especially afternoon rush hour, you're trying to come into Davis County or Northern Davis County. Uh, doesn't matter if you get off in Farmington or Kaysville or Layton, virtually every side street, and it wasn't like this at all a year ago, is just jam-packed. I went down on the same street a little earlier, about four o'clock, and there were cars backed up on your str- on Flint Street from the light all the way to the entrance to the dismissed subdivision at four o'clock in the afternoon. And I thought, where in the heck is, is everybody going?
This is constant.
So I think, as the mayor said, I think that's going to, over time, alleviate as these roads get back open, people will get back to their normal patterns. But it is, it is a growing area, it is going to be busy. With regard to the, the original issue, um, you were talking about with regard to why that wasn't punched through initially. That was a subject, I happened to be here then. And that was a, a subject of a great debate within the city, but also within the neighborhood. And the reason why two-hundred was not connected through was a concern from the residents. The, the ones who lived along Flin- Flint Street didn't, weren't concerned about it, but the ones that were more interior to the subdivision were very concerned that they would become the cut-through for people trying to get through to um the Parkway.
I know why they didn't put it in.
And, and so it was a, it was a decision that was made ultimately with public input and in the hu- the hospital and so forth. But yeah, it's um.
It still can be frustrating.
It's a real issue. Again, with the, the striping, I'm overstaying my welcome. But the, the striping issue, a lot of those things happen, they evolve and as problems develop because growth solves problems and growth creates problems. And sometimes it creates a problem for a short period of time before you have enough uh data to, to change that. And I think the striping, you know, typically we stripe, we could stripe four lanes. We usually stripe three to try to provide the flexibility that Councilmember Fitzpatrick was talking about. At some point, your volume just gets, get large enough that you have to make an adjustment. Again, driven out of safety. So those things just happen naturally, but it's good to be reminded and to hear from people that live in those areas. We drive them, we're, we manage them, it's our responsibility, but we don't live there and see everything that you do. So this feedback is really, really helpful uh for us to put a personal touch and a, and a perspective on it, but.
Now I just need to teach the people in my neighborhood that if you're turning left, get in the middle so I can turn right at the same time. Then I don't have to wait your fifteen minutes, I just have to wait my three to turn right.
Alex, would it be worth looking at reopening that two-hundred east? You know, I know I, I was here too on the planning commission when all that came through and the, and the controversy about it being a pass-through. But if that's their only in and out and that road now leads to a lighted intersection um at the Parkway, would it be something to look at, re, relooking at that issue to provide another egress for that subdivision?
I, I think we could always look at it. I think that the challenge now is, is that, that IAC owns all that property, was never dedicated. So it'd be a matter of IAC being willing to, to give up a, a, a road they don't control and run it right through the heart of their development, you know, they, so. Um, that was why it was, it was discussed extensively before that. And there were pros on both sides and cons on both sides, but that was ultimately the decision that was made. But that subdivision does have challenges with access.
Can I make a suggestion if that does get reopened up? I've thought about that a lot and I, I feel for the people that live on two-hundred because I could see that definitely make, they're used to a dead end. And so opening that up to a busy road down the street was, and it's a little traumatizing, right? I get, I get that. But I thought about if that is not a complete straight road and kind of curved to the hospital, then really the only people that would use it, hopefully, would be the people that live in that neighborhood. But that was just a thought. Rather than make it a direct straight rut line, which is easier to the eye to follow instead of maybe a turn, so, just a thought. Anyway, thank you for listening to.
Thank you for taking time.
Ms. Mangleson, could I please get your address?
That's two-five-one east, nine-two-five south.
Thank you.
Layton.
Hey, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address this from the public comment? Okay, oh, all righty.
I'll just take like thirty seconds. Chris Anderson, husband of Shannon Anderson, so same address. I came here about three years ago at this pulpit and talked about bus stops and people running my reds. Um, nothing's been done in three years. It's ridiculous to me. As my wife mentioned earlier, I had two people run my reds today. And let me tell you, it wasn't coming southbound. It was on my right-hand side of the bus as I was letting kids off. People are ignorant. It's all about them. They don't care. They don't. And I, as a bus driver and the three-hundred other bus drivers that we have, we are sick of it. We've mentioned to the cops numerous times to have something done and they don't care. They really don't.
Can I ask you?
Nothing, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, you're good.
So let me ask you a question. Is that occurring more in the morning or in your afternoon routes?
It's about fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Uh, 60/40 in the morning.
More so in the morning?
Yeah, yeah. My other question is too for Alex. I have a bus stop at Fieldstone Way, right north of Layton Parkway. There's a crosswalk there. Can you explain why there is one there, but you can't put one at 650?
I can't because I'm not familiar with the history of that. I'd be happy to look at it, though.
Okay, so Fieldstone Way is the entrance to the neighborhood where the new elementary school is off of 2200. What's it called again?
Sunburst.
Sunburst. Sunburst Elementary. I understand they probably put that crosswalk there because there's kids that are going to that school from across the neighborhood or across 2200. I don't see what any different that is of kids going to Ellison Park from our neighborhood. And it is just as close from that intersection to the crosswalk as it is from Hillfield to 650. So if you can just maybe look into that and just let us know or something like that, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, one more.
Okay, my name's Brian Schmidt, and I live in the 900 Flint Street neighborhood. So I live on 900 and 200 East. It's super fun to be that corner. Don't want 200 East open. My concern is actually I saw the preliminaries for a new park that's opening somewhere here. I can't remember the name of it. Probably.
It's out where the gentleman just spoke of as far as the new elementary.
I have five children. They range from two to 12. And that new park has a big kid section and a little kid section, which is wonderful, except for what I saw in the like preliminary drawing, is it looked like it was a bunch of trees in between the big kid section and the little kid section, which means as a mom who has five kids that's going to go everywhere, I can't sit in the middle, or I can't sit to the side and be able to see everything because the trees are there. So is that is that what the drawing is? Is it's trees in between? I get shade because I want shade as the mom.
Yeah.
But like, I sight, I need to be able to see the park to watch my two-year-old run around and to watch my 12-year-old because there's crazies everywhere. So I don't know if trees can be moved or benches or something. It's a weird one, I know, and definitely not as safety concerned as roads. But yeah.
So I'm I'm pretty sure that our parks planner has taken that into consideration and the type of trees that she was planning, that they would be more of a where you and there are benches planned so that you can sit in the shade. But I know that she did take into consideration the line of sight in both areas.
Okay.
So.
Because from the top, like the drawings I saw.
The drawing just looks like a clump, but I can't believe that she did take that into consideration.
Because I've been to other parks where instead of it being the relaxing, let my kids run around, I am constantly finding trying to find them because there's trees, bushes, whatever, in the way. And so and then they think I'm crazy that I'm always calling to them because I've dressed them in the bright neon shirt and still can't find them. So, all right.
Well, good for you.
That's it. Thanks.
Before you go, the recorder needs your address.
Oh, 223 East, 900 South.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Anyone else? Mr. Crane might have one online.
There's just one online comment from Rachel Burris, and it is regarding 2200. I don't have an address, Kim.
Rachel Burris.
Rachel Burris, yeah. And she is also speaking in favor of something being done at the intersection of 2200 and 650. I sent a copy to Kim, and I sent a copy to each of you. So.
Very good. Thank you for.
Eric, can I say something?
Absolutely.
So to the bus driver, our police officers can't be everywhere at all times. But I can tell you this, we need two things in in my office to prosecute a case like that. One would be we need a description of the vehicle with the license plate number. And the second thing is we needed somebody that can describe who was driving the car at the time. And if you're able to do those two things, we can actually prosecute a case based on 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 your testimony alone. So.
I would love to have you come ride with me so you can get that information.
There's no way a bus driver can do it. Would you rather make sure those don't get around?
And that's that's what I'm saying.
I know, I understand.
There's just there's not a lot. By the time you've seen him go by, and the police officer comes up behind you, you know, you'd have to have a police officer literally following you from stop to stop to stop.
And and I get it.
And they just can't do that.
Yeah, I do get it.
I'd love to ride with you, too.
I'd love to be a ride with you.
So if you got if you if one day, all it takes is one day of somebody with you with a camera that can take a shot, if you got somebody that'll go with you, and then you that person, same person can describe who's in the vehicle, I'll prosecute a case like that. So.
Yeah, we've had many, many bus drivers ask the district and even state funding for putting cameras as we have our stop arms out to catch these cars that are doing that. And they just say it's too expensive. So I would, you know, we would love to have it, you know, and I'd love to get information on the cars and stuff like that. But my focus is on the kids and making sure they're safe. So.
We appreciate that. It should be. So.
So I wasn't I wasn't going to bring it up when I talked about the traffic situation because I wanted to kind of leave the police out because I, you know, honestly, right now, I'm not sure why anyone would want to be a police officer. But we have an issue in our city with the lack of officer resources. When my son was hit, it took 25 minutes for an officer to get there. And that was after me calling an officer that I know his direct phone number. We had six officers at that time, and 22 calls, and four officers were at a fight. If my son would have been injured, that could have been a bad deal. So we have hotspots. There are hotspots within our area that absolutely need to be patrolled. We live on 900 North, where some traffic study was done, thought it was a great idea to put two stop signs. One at mine, I work in my office right on the corner window, 99% of the people run that stop sign every single day. I watch it. I watch the garbage truck, the cement trucks, everything. I hear screeches all day long of people almost getting hit. I know we don't have enough resources for officers or officers for what our city is growing. We seriously need to think that there needs to be some funding for the police department, whether that be additional patrol or something. But it it became apparent to me that I thought, wow, if my son was seriously injured, I'm going to wait 25 minutes before I get any help. And I happened to only have the ambulance stop because they were on their way back to the station and drove by and saw what was going on. So I a little plug for the police department. We're absolutely not where we need to be with the growth that we are seeing. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to mention, not to belabor, but if that would have come in as an EMS call, and I haven't listened to it, obviously, but the.
I I get it.
If somebody was injured, the EMS and the medics would have showed up, and we average about a four to five minute response time. So if it came in as a police property damage call, then they're going to take care of the family fight or the domestic violence before they come there. So if your son had been hurt, you'd have had an ambulance there and a paramedic.
I don't I I understand. I have family members in the police force. I completely recognize that. But even if he was injured, and there needed to be, just so you know, the officer did not cite the lady who hit my son. But the officer that was on call at the other time did cite them. The officer that was on call at the time of my son, they were too busy, and he really didn't want to do the paperwork. Okay, well, thank you. We'll note that as well. One last time, anybody else on public comment? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate all the feedback we've received tonight, and we'll certainly take that into consideration. We'll now move on to our consent items. And these items are considered routine in nature and can be acted upon in a single motion if desired by the council. If you if anybody wants to remove any of these, we certainly could. But for the time being, I think we'll just go ahead and proceed as our agenda is written. So item number A will be presented by Mr. Steve Jackson, which is to adopt the 2020 Layton City Municipal Wastewater Plan.
Mayor, Council, it's good to be with you tonight. Before you, for your adoption is Resolution 20-21, which approves the Utah Department of Environmental Qualities requirement for us to submit our annual Layton City Wastewater Planning Program annual report. Some of the highlights from that report just include basic information about our system, how many facilities we have, over 200 miles of pipes. Our largest pipe is 18 inches in size. The approximate year the system started was 1945. There are seven collection system operators that are certified with the city at this time to maintain and operate that system as well as other staff that assist with that. Some of the biggest issues we face in the in the system are from fats, oils, and grease that are put down the sewer pipes, as well as sometimes we get roots in our in our pipes from older concrete pipes that have maybe weakened joints or whatever. But then sanitary wipes are also a very big one. I know you know about those, but they are a major problem in every sewer system in the country right now. So and then vandalism, people like to throw things in our sewer manholes for some reason. And I get it, but it causes this problem. So with that, I'm not going to belabor it. The recommendation from staff is to adopt Resolution 20-21 authorizing the adoption of the 2020 Layton City Municipal Wastewater Planning Program annual report and authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Can I answer any questions?
I have a couple. So on page three of the report, it talks about one area talks about showing the funding revenues are sufficient for the OMNR for the next five years. But then it goes on to ask about the repair and replacement sinking fund anticipated to meet the needs. We don't have one. So are the funding revenues sufficient if we don't have a a replacement plan fund for whatever the sinking?
Yes, we do have sufficient funds. What the sinking fund is, is a very specific fund that you can establish that you put money into every year for unexpected expenses or maybe larger expenses that you don't necessarily want to plan for. Our rates are set such that we have just a single account that we use, and we make sure that those rates cover all of our expenses, and we don't have a separate fund that only is authorized for that. There's there's other companies that Weber Basin, for example, has one of these funds now where they call it their capital asset replacement recovery, and they earmark it for only those things. And we've just operated historically off of the one account. We move the money where it needs to be for either capital projects or repairs.
Okay. And then on that same page as well, it talks about a rate study having not been done in five years, and that we don't charge impact fees. Do we not charge sewer impact fees? Or?
No, the sewer district does have an impact fee that they charge, and we don't have one. It's typically the sewer lines are not oversized for the system. They put in a minimum size, and it services them their properties. And so there is no impact fee there. The rate study has not been completed in the last five years, if you recall, because the sewer district was increasing their rates pretty steadily for the last little while. And that's why we've held off on doing one of those rate studies. But that is on the horizon for just to make sure we're covering our costs.
Okay. And then I just have kind of one other question. So in going through it, it talks about the under facilities, maintenance, and then SSMP evaluation. And then it says date of public notice, June 19, 2014. So was that the last time we looked at something that we had to have a public notice of?
For for the SSMP, that was the last time that it was required to be publicly noticed. We we use that to constantly look at how we're maintaining the systems. But but there haven't been major changes to this program for quite a while. It's a fairly robust system that works very well. And so we feel like we've got a good program in place. There's always ways to improve, but but nothing that has been substantial that we need to address from a state standpoint where that has to be publicly noticed. So.
Okay. And and I think the report's great. I really like the demographics I mentioned to you that were tied to the end of it. I'm not sure we've seen some of that. But I think it's just kind of really neat in reading it that, you know, this is a $305 million system, and it runs for 219 miles. And one of the things that really shocked me on it was the largest pipe that we have currently was installed in 1956. That's a long time ago. Hopefully, that pipe's really, really holding up. But, you know, and and the one thing that really caught my eye that I hope some education's been done on is is that the sanitary wipes are continuing to be a problem in the system. You guys are finding them, you know, at locations. And, you know, TV commercials tell you to use them, but we shouldn't be. So.
But I know the sewer district's been on a big push, too, to kind of encourage people not to use them. And it's nationwide, they've been trying to do this. But they put a I know that they're working with a lot of the manufacturers to see if they can kind of change, perhaps, some of the the material it's made out of so it doesn't catch. What's happening is you've got cement pipes, and those things are nets, and they just you know, attach themselves to the sewer to those cement pipes. But Mr. Thomas, did you have a question?
I just an excuse. But I'm reading here, is this Resolution 2120 or 2021? Because I keep hearing 2021.
Excuse me, then. It's 2120. If I've misspoken, I apologize.
I'm sorry. I even brought it up. That's not my nature.
2120. So.
But yeah.
Please, please approve 2120. If I'm I'm a little dyslexic, I guess, on that. But thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item B, which our city recorder, Kimberly Reed, will go over that item for us regarding polling.
In your packet, you should have copy of Resolution 2124, which will approve the polling locations and vote centers associated with the 2021 municipal election. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Do you want a statum, just in case anybody's watching?
The polling locations and vote centers identified for Davis County for the 2021 municipal election will be Bountiful Library, Centerville Library, Clearfield City Hall, Clinton Recreation Center, Farmington Community Center, Fruit Heights City Hall, that it would be just for the general election only, Kaysville Library, Davis Conference Center, North Salt Lake City Hall, South Weber Family Activity Center, Sunset City Hall, Syracuse Library, West Bountiful City Hall, West Point City Hall, and Woods Cross City Hall. Let me point out that Davis, excuse me, Layton City's polling location is not here. It's the Davis Conference Center. All of these polling locations are designated for the primary and the general. However, if a city does not have a primary election within their city, their respective vote center is not open for the primary election. Also, their council member, Fitzpatrick, asked prior to the meeting tonight about drop box locations. In the past, we've had a drop box location here. It was a temporary box here at City Hall that no longer will be available this election. Davis County has installed permanent drop boxes at every polling location. Those are secure, protected. They're available 24 hours a day. And that was the problem with what we had here is that it was only open during business hours. So anything after 5:00 PM or on weekends or earlier in the morning before we opened at 8:00 AM, those ballots weren't able to be dropped off. So you have any questions?
Questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item number C is regarding our adoptive of our tentative budget. And Mr. Tracy Probert, our finance director, will present that.
Mayor, members of the council, I bring to you tonight Resolution 21-23, adopting a tentative budget for Layton City for fiscal year for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, and setting a public hearing to hear interested persons prior to the final adoption of the budget. Just a few highlights on the budget. This budget proposes, given the the beginning of the construction of new fire station on the east side of the city, to hire six new firefighters for nine months of the fiscal year and an additional six for three months of that fiscal year, one new police officer, one evidence technician in the police department, one accounting clerk in the finance department. It also proposes funding 3% merit increase for current employees and adjustments for current salary survey. It also proposes converting two part-time fire inspectors to one full-
to one full-time position. In addition to those things related to personnel, there's $30.1 million in operational expenses covered, $2.9 million in equipment, $16.2 million in projects related to streets, water, sewer, storm, street light, and ramp. Those projects are found in the tentative budget document listed on pages 96 through 99, if anyone listening would want to look at those. And there's also 3.2 million for debt service and other obligations. It's proposed that 3.7 million in general fund balance be used to balance the general fund for the 2022 budget. One of the last items worth noting in this public meeting would be that as Davis County is proposing to discontinue their paramedic service or provision of that service at the end of calendar year 2022, all of the cities and districts in the county are in the process of signing an agreement where that service will be provided by city, will continue to be provided by Layton, of course, but be picked up by other cities who are not currently providing paramedic service. What that means to us is that in order to continue providing the service at the same level, the city will go through a truth and taxation process to increase our city property tax levy to account for and the corresponding decrease in the county's property tax levy. So for a property tax owner, that should be a net zero increase, no increase, no decrease. But citizens will notice that, and as we go through the truth and taxation process, which was highlighted in the work meeting that will go through the end of August and will include public hearings and some educational pieces related to that. People may notice that their city rate went up and their county rate will go down. If there are any, are there any questions related to this tentative budget?
Counsel?
If not, staff will recommend the council adopt Resolution 21-23, adopting the tentative budget and setting a public hearing for June 3rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our consent items. So counsel, I'd look for a motion regarding our consent items.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolutions 2120, 2124, and 2123 as presented.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the consent items as presented. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our public hearing. So with that, Mr. Probert's going to present our first item, which is amending the, the adopted budget.
Great. Mayor, members of the council, bring to your ordinance 21-10 to amend the current year fiscal budget, budget for Layton City for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021. From time to time throughout the year, we have to amend our budget and we do that through a public process, hence this time for a public hearing. Some of the major items in these amendments relate to the use of traffic impact fees for Layton Parkway and 2700 West, $1.5 million transfer from our impact fee fund to those projects in the capital projects fund. There's also a transfer of ramp funds for $55,088 for some overruns at the Andy Adams Tennis Court project. In addition, there's an amendment for $300,000 in use of water fund balance for the Layton Parkway and 2700 West project and $900,000 in stormwater impact fees for that same project at Layton Parkway and 2700 West. We also had some shortfalls in our athletic fund last year, $77,222, almost entirely related to the COVID pandemic and the cancellation of programs and refund of, of registrations for different athletic programs in the city. So we're proposing to transfer general fund monies of $77,222 to the athletic fund to make that fund whole and $4,911 transfer from the general fund to the 911 dispatch fund for a shortfall that they had last fiscal year. Are there any questions regarding any of these amendments?
Counsel, any questions? Okay. Thank you. With that, I would look for a motion to open the public hearing regarding item A as far as adopting the amended budget.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The public, this is not a public hearing, so therefore anyone who would like to make a statement regarding item number A on our public hearing matter is welcome to do so at this time. Okay. Seeing that there's none here, Mr. Crane, is there anything online?
None online.
None online. Okay. Knowing that there is no comments at this time, counsel, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing regarding item number A, amending the adopted budget.
Let's close.
Okay. Madam, Madam Mayor, make a motion that we close the public hearing on item A and that we amend the adopted budget for fiscal year 2021, ordinance 21-10.
Second to that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Being that this is a public hearing, we need to do a roll call vote. So with that, I'll start with Mr. Thomas down there. Councilman Thomas?
Four.
Okay. Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Patrick?
Aye.
Councilman Bloxham?
Aye.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
There you have it. It's unanimous for item number A. Okay. We'll move on to item number B, which is our community block grant. And this item will be presented by Mr. Morgan Cloward.
Mayor and council, Resolution 2122, proposal for the 20, year 2021, 2022, community development block grant activities and funding. You might recall a few months ago, I made a presentation on what CDBG entails and all the activities the city has been participating in. And as you can see, I have a, I have a list of what we're proposing after consulting from comments from the public and with our CDBG committee, from administrative on down to our public service partners, including Open Doors, Safe Harbor, Layton Community Action Council, which is youth court in Lantern House. Any questions on those proposed funded amounts?
Do you have any questions? Go ahead if you do.
One of the things, Morgan, and I appreciate all the work that the, the committee does. I remember last year, I have notes from, from last year. I went through and read the minutes from last year and there's some, I won't name, there's a specific public service sub-grant group that has not been here to discuss any of the public hearings for the two years that I've been on the council, yet they're still getting money. And I, I'm not going to be so spiteful as to remove their funding, but Safe Harbor, Youth Court, Lantern House, they were all here, you know, saying, here's what we're using the money for. Here's why we're, why we think we should be eligible for these types of programs and this type of money. And I haven't seen that from one of the other recipients. And so I guess it's not necessarily going to block their money or anything like that, but it's just a frustration that I've had. It's the second year that I just feel like they need to realize that they're not, they're not an entitlement. This isn't an entitlement. This is something that we have the, the ability to be able to decide who gets what with your help through the commission. And I just want to make it, make sure that it's kind of put out there that we want to have, I want to see people come in and, and tell us what they're using the money for, because I'm not just going to check a box because they've got it last year. And so I just wanted to say that before we, we get too far into it. It's just something that's been, been on my mind.
Okay. So I'm assuming you're referring to Open Doors. Okay. So did you receive my response regarding the complaint, the email that you received previously? Okay. So I, I was able to provide that. And I also invited Jason Wilde, the director for Open Doors, to attend this evening. He, he is here and, and I'm sure Jason would be happy to come up and answer any concerns or questions you have, Zach?
Yeah, no, I really, I really just wanted to have them here. So the fact that he's here, that's, that's what I wanted.
Okay.
Because they weren't here in the, in the first set of discussions, first public hearing, and the other three were. So the fact that, that they're represented here is a step in the right direction. So.
Okay.
I can speak to that organization as well as they, they, just like the others, I know that they reach out and actually take care of a lot of folks, not only just in, in food and housing, but childcare, as well as getting people not, not back on their feet, but really educating them to improve their lives. So I, I know it's a good organization, but yes, I'm glad that Jason's here so that you can kind of see the.
And I, I wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to put, I mean, these are people who are helping residents who are in the most difficult situations of their life. So I'm not going to, to, I don't want to make it seem like I don't want to, to fund it. I just, I want to be able to ask them what they've done with the money. That's, that's all it was.
That's fair. That's very clear. Any other questions?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, may I? Morgan, thank you once again for all your work on this. Question about the historic downtown infrastructure. Was it similar to what we did last year with the facades on those three buildings, the? So that was a separate fund from the county, but we do have that portion that we can use for facade grants. And we have some other projects that we're working on right now to make some improvements with the infrastructure, that, that part of the city. So moving forward, we'll know what those plans, what those plans are then. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Once again, this is a public hearing, so I need a motion to open up our public meeting regarding the community block grant.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we open the public hearing on agenda item B on the public hearing.
It is now a public meeting, so anyone who wishes to speak on item number B, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Shelley Pace, and I actually live in West Valley. I am representing Davis Community Housing Authority. And, you know, West Valley, it's a, it's not my favorite, but it was cheap. So I wanted to report on what we've done so far in the last year. The last time that I came, I'd only had a couple of months in the job, so I was a little bit nervous. So, so far, we have provided $30,000 worth of directs to contractors who have come in and repaired things to nine different households. We have replaced a roof. There was a, an elderly woman who was repeatedly becoming hospitalized due to, to her AC not working. And we were able to get that fixed so that she could return home and not be hospitalized every week. We were able to replace someone's windows with energy efficient ones. We went into a home who, she had lost heat and was heating her home with just turning on her stove, her gas burners, and opening up her oven, was able to get someone in there within a couple days, the, and replaced the furnace so that, you know, didn't blow up her house or get poisoned. So with that, we do limit it to anyone with 80% or less AMI. Two of the households were below 20% AMI and two were under 40%. And five of the households had individuals with disabilities and there were 14 total and 27 people total. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for, for the report.
Oh, and actually, sorry. I just wanted to comment that Open Doors is amazing for the community and I just wanted to vouch for them real quick.
I don't want to come across it. I don't like Open Doors. It's just a matter of I want to just talk to them.
Yeah, I understand.
They do great service. Thank you.
Okay.
That's a fair complaint. I'm Jason Wilde. I'm from Open Doors. You can ask me anything, councilman. We first want to thank you for the funding that you have given us. We've been able to help thousands of Layton residents with emergency food supplies, hundreds of children served in our crisis respite nursery, and all kinds of families throughout our communities. At Open Doors, we seek out the most vulnerable people in our communities in Davis County and work with them to lift them from a vulnerable state to a safe state, at which point, once they, once they feel safe and they have their basic needs met of some food, shelter, then we can really offer some of our programs that really move them towards self-sufficiency and hopefully thriving. We have a Circles program that is extremely intense to, to help move people out of poverty. In the past few years, we've had five people buy homes and, and obtain living wage jobs, which is a complete turnaround for those people who thought they were always going to live in a trailer park. And now they've got their dream house. That's actually a lot harder right now in this economy. They might have to move to West Valley. Sorry, my friend. So our, our request this year is to help fund our Circles, our food bank, and our motel voucher program. This past year with the pandemic, what we really did with our motel voucher program was to help families in these really vulnerable, low-income situations that if somebody in that home got COVID, we could put them in the hotel, keep the rest of the family safe so they could keep doing, hopefully their job, even if it was just part-time, without being impacted even more negatively. So we're very grateful for that, for that funding. We, I also wanted to give a shout out to the youth council. They've been extremely supportive of us coming and doing service projects all throughout the summer. We love them. We love seeing them. We're so happy when they show up. And if you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to take them.
I just have one out of curiosity on the motel vouchers. Do you place them, if they're a Layton resident, do you place them in a Layton motel or wherever you can find the best deal?
Our goal is to keep the money in the communities that are giving us the funding. It's not always possible. Boy, with this COVID thing, there were a lot of hotels that did not want somebody COVID positive staying in their place. So we put a few of them in a, in a place in Clearfield where we've placed people for years that, that gentleman's more than willing to work with us. But our goal is that, and we did place the majority of them in, in Layton.
Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Does anyone else wish to speak on the topic?
Sorry, wasn't planning on getting up for this. I'm Diana Angelson again. I just want to speak real briefly about Open Doors to give you more information. I've had the opportunity to do the Circles program for a little while, and I just want to say they're amazing. I learned a lot with them, with the people there. They are like a family. And if there's anybody out there that, that needs, that, I mean, just confidence, that's what they gave me was, was confidence. We weren't in dire straits or anything, but I was able to go there and gain much-needed confidence that I didn't have before. And if there's anybody that just wants, you know, someone to help them through the steps and give them that confidence and help them to feel like they mean something, because there were fantastic people that came from all walks of life into those meetings. And there was pure love, pure love and welcoming. They were just, they were amazing. And so that's just a very small portion of Safe Harbor that I personally have experience with. So just wanted to put a shout out to them.
Thank you. Mr. Crane, is there anything online?
Nothing.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, I'll look for action on item number B then, as far as our public hearing. I'll need a closing and.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I move that we close the public hearing and adopt Resolution 21-22, the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'll take a roll call vote on this. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilman Bloxum?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. That's unanimous. We'll now move on to item number C, which will be presented by Mr. Chad Wilkinson, our economic and development director.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll unveil this one more time for you.
All right.
Yeah, there you go. It's gotten, gotten bushier since last time. This is only going to be here until May 15.
I was going to wonder when the play was.
Excuse me? Yes, sir. Okay, okay. I, I can't even compete with that, so. Just real briefly, we, we want to bring before you tonight the request for an annexation and rezone of a property. This property is located approximately 950 South, 1700 West. The red dot on the drawing there shows the approximate location of the property. The proposed annexation is for 5.44 acres. That area is outlined, excuse me, in this red cross hatching. There is a slight difference between the annexation area and the rezone area, primarily because there's a piece of this property that's already within the city. So, the rezone area is a total of 5.93 acres, annexation area 5.44 acres. The proposed rezone would take the property from, portion of the property from RS to, to R110. The portion of the county, by default, goes to agricultural zoning when it's annexed. That would be, propose to be changed to R110 as well. Just again, really briefly, the Planning Commission has reviewed this proposal, where they've recommended approval of both the annexation and the zone change subject to an annexation agreement. The annexation agreement spells out a few conditions related to extension of some existing infrastructure, the treatment of a road that has a no-cut policy right now for, for three years while the, this is a new road, 1700 West, and then just some land use issues that, that came up during the review of the proposal. So, with that, we are recommending that the council adopt, there are three different adoptions here tonight. First is to adopt Resolution 2121, approving the annexation agreement between Leighton City and Capitol Reef Management LLC. Number two would be to adopt Resolution, excuse me.
Ordinance?
Ordinance, thank you, 2109, which is approving the rezone. And then the other is to adopt 2121, I'm missing one, 2108, 2109 are both related to the, the rezone and the annexation, then 2121 is related to the annexation agreement. We'd propose, or we would recommend approval of each of these resolutions and ordinances. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Wow. No questions. Okay, I'll look for action to open the public hearing.
So, moved.
Second? Actually, we don't need to second that, sorry. Okay, it's now a public hearing, so anyone who wishes to speak on item number C, our annex, annexation agreement, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Okay, seeing that there's none who wish to speak, Mr. Crane?
Nothing.
Nothing online. Okay, very good. Then, counsel, I'll look for action to close the public hearing and adopt item number C. It's a complicated one.
It is a complicated one. So, if I get it wrong, Gary, just holler at me. So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on the following, that we adopt the annexation agreement and request Resolution 2021, ordinance 2108, and ordinance 2109, rezoning the land, and I don't know which is which, Ag to 110 or RS to 110, at the address at approximately 950 South, 1700 West, and close the public hearing.
Thank you. There's a second?
Again, I can't believe I'm doing this twice. You said 2021, is that right?
21.
Should be 2121.
On resolution.
That's a resolution 2121.
Yeah, I thought you said 2021. It's okay, my ears are.
Okay, are you going to second that motion then?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'll take a roll call vote. With that, I'll start out with Councilman Bloxum.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, Councilman Day?
Yes.
It's getting, let you, okay, Councilman Morris?
Aye.
And Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Okay, there you have it. It's unanimous.
Can we make another motion that we change Tom's name to something else?
He's paying attention, he heard Thomas. Okay, okay, that brings our public hearing to a close. It actually is the last item on our agenda, unless anybody has any unfinished business they'd like to bring before us. Okay, seeing that there's no unfinished business, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, folks, for staying, and welcome to Leighton City.